I should do this. This is like what I ought to do. You guys already know me. All right. Hi. Kirk, how you doing?
Good.
All right. Uh, okay, we're gonna get started here. Welcome to the special meeting of the Plaserville City Council for Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty, twenty twenty-five. Our open session, so let's see here. I'm assuming we go through all the bits like we normally do. Um. Calling this meeting to order, and let's pledge our allegiance. Oh, God, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Mayor Clarici.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
And Councilmember Yarborough will be noted as currently absent.
Great. We have no announcements or presentations to the public? So can we adopt this agenda?
I'll move to adopt.
I'll second.
Do we have any public discussion on the agenda? I'm not facing them. It's terrible. I should face them. I'm assuming it's still no. Okay, great. Thank you. So we have, uh, the, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Item number one, five point one, a discussion item. Review and discuss updates to the city's strategic plan and governance handbook and city council handbook, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm gonna run through this very quickly. We don't have a lot of recommended changes. In fact, we've already implemented what we thought needed to be done in here. There's nothing major, just kind of updating things that certain things have been completed, so we pulled them out of our strategic plan. So just quickly, we went through this last year. I think everything was good. This is the first slide is the, you know, switch that David, give me the changer if you want to. That's good. Is our, our vision, as you can see. Let me get to it. We are a welcoming, active, and business-friendly rural foothill community built on California's rich Gold Rush history. This was changed, I think, two years ago we changed this. So, um, I'll, I'll just throw it out there for now. Any changes, questions about the strategic plan or the vision?
How do we want to do this? Do we want to go through it and then talk to the people behind us, or do we want to?
I, I.
About each individual? I think we should go through it. Let's go through it.
Okay, okay. That's up to you. Perfect. Okay. Uh, second is our, our mission statement, uh, which is the city of Plaserville shall provide a safe, efficient, effective, and responsive government for the well-being of its residents, businesses, and visitors. Questions, comments, recommendations? I don't think that has changed. I think that's been our mission statement since we first adopted our strategic plan. Just a, a general statement. And then next, um, we have our, our city values, and these have, these did change either last year, the, the one business friendly did change a little bit either last year or the year before, and we've, we've implemented those changes. So, uh, number one, sense of community. Plaserville is a working community rich in culture and diversity with great parks and trails and safe, well-kept neighborhoods. Leadership, the city of Plaserville is a nonpartisan, fiscally responsible municipality and values honest, ethical leadership. Service and quality, dedicated to providing well-planned infrastructure and high-quality services to meet current and future needs. Business-friendly, ardent supporter of local commerce and diverse business culture. That's the one that we did make some changes to either last year or the year before. And then economic prosperity, seeking economic development that provides good-paying jobs and a range of housing options and community amenities that meet the needs of our citizens and visitors. Questions, comments, recommendations, anything there you like or don't like?
Uh, the, the range of housing options is a bit of a stretch, but, I mean, we do aspire.
That, that's our goal.
That is our goal. And it is true. I guess if you look at all the listings in town, they do cover a range of options, so, okay.
Okay. Um, so next, now, I'm not gonna go through each of the objectives under each strategic goal. I'm just gonna li- list the, uh, the titles. So I'll give you a few minutes as I list, as we list each one, and you can, uh, if there's anything in there, either you or staff, please look at it also, staff. Things that you see in your areas that maybe you haven't caught before that things should be changed, um, please do so. So, uh, number one is our infrastructure. And that means maintain and improve our infrastructure and facilities to provide a safe community. And then there's a, there's a number of things underneath there, a total of seven individual strategies to identify different things that, uh, we are either working on or strive to achieve in our infrastructure. So. Melissa has, here.
Uh, one of the recommendations that I was thinking of is where we discuss identifying, repairing, and replacing existing infrastructure. I would like to see a safety component added to that because we do need some safety improvements.
That's four A.
Yes.
So, so just quickly, wha- any changes we, we bring up tonight, we will make and then bring back to you for adoption because we're not taking any action at this meeting tonight. So it's just kind of yes, no, agree, you know, kind of agreeing to themes, and then we'll, we'll get the actual language, so.
Yeah.
All right, go.
Okay, anything else you see under there? I mean, I guess I could read through quickly. The first one is the public safety building, which we're gonna discuss a little bit more tonight. Uh, also broadband is number two. We will discuss further. Updated technology, um, update and maintain city-owned infrastructure. Melissa just addressed that one a little bit. Our courtyard revitalization, which we've had on there for a while and is moving forward at a slow pace, but we're, we're getting there. And then develop plan to address deferred maintenance on our parks and trails and develop plan to restore and protect, protect historic city halls. So those are the seven strategies underneath, um, infrastructure.
I think I have an old version because I don't have, I only have, uh, five items under that. So I must have been given an old version.
Uh-oh. Does everybody else have seven but Ryan?
I have seven.
We have seven.
It's the one you handed me in the blue binder at the city, at City Hall.
Okay, it may have been, there may have been some things that we probably got you the old one.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Ryan. If, if you if you would, probably if you can share with David, looking at his, his should be correct. Okay, but you didn't give him the whole thing, the whole strategic plan, did you? Okay. Oh, you got all of it. Okay, perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Ryan. Yeah, that's, that's my mistake when I printed that out for you. Where did you take yours from? Okay, the one in the agenda was the correct one. There's more than one copy in there. That's what I did too, so. All right, um, anything else under infrastructure?
Yeah, I actually, yeah, I wanted to address, and I, I, because I didn't even see it in here, I wanted to possibly add it, but now that I see it's kind of addressed. I'd like, uh, council to consider kind of beefing up that, um, strategy number six about the deferred maintenance on parks and trails. I, I, I kind of did a lo- some wording here, and I can give this to you, Cleve, but something to the effect of, I know Dennis is already kind of working down this road. I think it'd be good for us to put it in our strategic plan uh, about conducting a comprehensive inventory of our parks and recreation assets to identify broken or deteriorating, deteriorating facilities, uh, create a prioritized list of repair and replacement projects, and establish a CIP to address these needs, and then to develop a long-term strategy to manage deferred maintenance and ensure sustainability of our parks. So, and I know Dennis is already kind of going down this road, but we have a lot of currently broken, um, stuff that, you know, we really need to kind of, I think, maybe put some more wording in here to strengthen that, uh, in our strategic plan. So, um, if, if that's, if council's interested in doing something like that, I'd like to see us kind of address the deteriorated situation of our parks a little bit more in the strategic plan.
Well, we have three points, so I'd like you to be specific on how you want it to strengthen it, because a lot of what you said is kind of covered there, so.
And, and, and like I said, I didn't have this, so I didn't, I didn't even know that it was in here. I was actually gonna put it under, under the health and public, I'm sorry, under the, um, maintain improved quality of life because I thought that was a more appropriate place for it. But, um, yeah, I
So when you read your newly revised
Yes.
thing, do you think it covers it? If not, we can, you can work with that.
Yeah, the thing, the other option, Ryan, is if you want to share that with myself or, and/or Dennis,
Will, yeah.
and he can work that into these and when we bring them back for changes. I don't, I didn't hear anything that we don't agree with, and I know Dennis has been working on a lot of that, so.
Yep.
If the council's in agreement with that, we can amend some of those slightly to, to make it work. Okay. Anything else under infrastructure? Okay. Next one is, um, fiscal stability and sustainability. Create a fiscally stable and sus- and sus- stable and sustainable government that can provide for and maintain a safe community with a high quality of life. And the items under there are strategy number one, identify fiscal risks and opportunities. Number two, increase revenues. Number three, minimize existing debt. Number four, continue to address unfunded pension liabilities. Number five, meet financial commitments and reporting requirements, and that's it. Any questions, comments, suggestions? Dave? That was your, I know you already made quite a bit to it, so. Yeah, corrected some things, so. Is it really? I know that we, we did, that's right, because we did correct some things. There were some things in there that have been completed now, so we took those out. Um, so that's, that's the main difference, I think, that we did there. This particular one, as you know, there's other things on our agenda once we complete the strategy tonight, and this is one that, uh, those other items kind of fold into this area, um, that we can discuss. And, and we can also, if you'd like, after we discuss those other items, if there's things you would like to see us do to uh, add to these strategies or amend them based on that, that discussion, we can do that once we finish with those, so.
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Everybody's good there? Health and public safety. Provide public safety systems through professionalism, integrity, and justice to create a safe city to live, work, and play. Number one is wildfire protection, disaster preparedness. Number two, address homelessness. Number three, develop relationships. Number four, equipment replacement slash maintenance. Number five, demolition of decommissioned facilities. Number six, proactive policing. Number seven, permit processes. Number eight, solid waste disposal. Develop a solid waste program that provides the environment and provides, protects the environment and provides efficient and effective service. And that's it. Great. Questions, comments on any of those? And there is more detail. For those that don't have a copy of this, there is more detail under each one of those. The wildfire protection, the homelessness, and, and each one has objectives under each strategy. Okay. Maintain slash improve quality of life strategy, or provide and maintain vibrant public spaces, events, and programs, and ensure a well-designed and protected city infrastructure. Number one, expand and improve public facilities and recreation programs. Number two, develop a venue for public event space. Three, improve and refine special events. Number four, encourage and provide space for public art. And number five, support programs for all generations slash stages of life. Number six, maintain and update planning documents. Number seven, develop a comprehensive code enforcement program. Number eight, develop, or document historical assets. And number nine, develop and expand programs and projects to beautify the city. Everybody good there, it looks like?
I'm good.
All right. Next is economic development. Support a place for economic vitality and a vibrant lifestyle that respects Plaserville's historic identity. And before I go through those, and maybe I don't need to, these are actually from our economic development strategic plan that Peak developed, so these are the same thing that, that they are working on that was folded over into our economic development page for our citywide strategy. Promote primary job growth, prepare for the future, enhance and diversify cultural and other tourism attractions. Enhance community identity, the look and feel of a great town. Uh, pursue new opportunities for business, promote regulatory reform, and support smart housing through mixed-use development and other housing types to meet the needs of all. That's it. We're good. And then the last one is actually, you have a whole separate document for this also is your good governance. Um, that the council developed three or four years, I don't remember. Were you on the council then, Mayor?
I wasn't here.
You weren't? Okay, so it was after you had left, okay. Anyway, we created the good governance manual, and that is also in your, in your packet for your review. But again, these are strategies that come from that document. Number one, set direction for this, for the city reflective of the community's priorities. Create a supportive framework for action by supporting systems and human resources that can succeed. Hold ourselves accountable through mutually agreed upon mechanisms and regular self-assessment. Provide support to staff through behaviors and actions. Demonstrate community leadership on behalf of residents through listening and proactive decisions. Okay. Let's go home.
Would would anybody from the public like to comment on what we just talked about?
I would like to say that if we don't do good fire prevention in terms of having hydrants that work and valves that can regulate the water, none of the rest of these will matter. We will have the Hangtown Fire, and we will look like Southern California. So knowing that we do have hydrants that don't work, I would like to see having our fire hydrants in working order as a priority. And also the water valves that control the water going to those hydrants and to the rest of the system as a priority item for us. And that's my main comment. Everything looks great, but if you don't have that, you don't have a city.
Um, good evening. I appreciate having a microphone so it's easy to hear you when you talk to, I mean, not for me to have it, but you. I'd like to go back to the, um, just a minute, the, oh, what's the very first sentence, the vision. We're a welcoming, active, and business-friendly rural foothill community built on California's rich Gold Rush history. To me, it feels like there are things missing in that. You know, I am always concerned about beautification and quality of life and, and I think in several places under other places, even under strategic goal, you list quality of life. And, um, I think it's important to define that. I think having in the, um, mission statement or the, the vision, not having it there, I think, is a mistake. There is, um, a lot about business-friendly, but what about, and I know that you have to do that because that's what makes the city run, is the sales tax that you get. But I think that the vision statement is really more than what you have in there, and I'd like to see something related to livability or quality of life, or, I mean, I don't even profess to know what to say. I just think it's a concept I think should be added there. I, I, I have read this many times, um, from Hal Conklin, who used to be the mayor of Santa Barbara at one time. The American city is in search of a vision. We must restore to our communities a structure that is vital, one that not only cares about its neglected bridges and roads, but one that also cares about its infrastructure of the spirit. So that's kind of the concept that I'm thinking of.
I would just echo what Sue Rodman said about fire safety being a periminate, uh, goal. For example, in the back of the room, we have an evacuation chart. It's the first time I've seen. I don't know if I'm the only one to see that chart, but that's something that needs to be explored with great detail in addition to finding out about fire hydrants.
Thank you very much for those comments. Um, we'll take it into consideration. I don't know, but does anybody else have anything to say on this issue?
I, I guess, well, the question to the council now is, would you like us to address something in our vision to talk about quality of life and livability that was discussed by a member of the audience?
I'm fine with mentioning it. I mean, the problem is, is we extend it, and then we say, doesn't mean anything. You can shrink it, and then somewhere in the middle is, is, you know, the happy medium, you know? So I would just say, I, yeah, I don't have an issue with adding the quality of life.
Life. Enhancing the quality of life of our residents. It is, it is the first thing. Yeah, the sense of community. I guess that's it. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with putting it in the vision statement. I do, I think it was mentioned that we might like to try to define it, which I think would be a fool's errand because everybody would have vastly different things to say about that. But, you know, quality of life is one of those sort of broad enough, um, statements that I think you could pull it off, so sure. Yeah, I, if you want to come back with something, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm trying to figure out where you would put it in here, but, um, I guess, I guess maybe after rural foothill community and before built on California's rich
Yeah, the, you know.
Supports quality of life.
Yeah, supports quality of life for its residents or, I mean, supports the quality of life of, but then you get into like, well, who are we, is it the residents? Is it, uh, people that come to visit us?
I'm just trying to, yeah, figure out where it would go. I'm not opposed to something related to quality of life in there. It's just sort of
Yeah.
put it in without making this a very, like, wordy, more than
Yeah. Rural foothill community values, the, I, I mean, if we're gonna value the quality of life, it has to be our residents because they're the actual people that live here. And so, I mean, a lot of people pass through here, and we love each and every one of them, but, you know, it's the people that actually live within the six and a half miles that call itself Plaserville, but I think if we, if we want to do something like that, then I would be okay.
Yeah, I just was, echo brevity, obviously, you know, we, we need to maintain the brevity of
Yeah.
the vision statement, but yeah, I'm okay with adding some kind of
Okay.
two or three words in there to address quality of life.
Make it so.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, if I could also comment on, on the fire safety, we do have under strategy, strategy six D is implement hydrant repair, replacement, maintenance, and flushing program to improve community resiliency against fire risk. So that strategy is in our current.
And I, and we, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but are we aware of any fire hydrants that don't work? Well, we received notifications from the Yeah. Okay. All right. All right. Yeah, I don't want the public to think that there's like all these fire hydrants that if you plug them, that, that we're not aware of. I mean, I'm not aware of these are currently But the thing, the shroud, they would have a shroud over them. Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll also mention that we, uh, Chief Cordero and our public works director, Nick Stone, and I talked the other day, and we are working on a program, starting a program of fire hydrant flushing, and we're working
Yes.
together with that, and that should be starting soon, so.
And, and the valve exercising thing has been a topic for a long time, so we do need to be vigilant when it comes to valve exercising, but, okay. All right, well, thank you. Great, thank you very much. Okay, anything else on this discussion item? Okay. We will move on to item number six, one. Review and discuss options for funding the proposed public safety building, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, for your reading pleasure, we did include the, our, um, needs assessment. It's in your packet if you, uh, get a chance to see that. Um, Ryan, do you have that?
Yes, I, actually, I just was realizing that we didn't answer either the two questions. It was in the staff report for five point one that you wanted us to address, by the way. Uh, staff had two things that they wanted us to talk about in five point one on the staff report. Um, addressing, adding things to the agenda and processes for doing that.
Oh.
So, I, I just happened to see that as I was flipping through the
Right.
to address those two questions that you had there.
Let's go back to five point one.
Thank you. I, I apologize. Thanks for reminding me, Ryan. I, I didn't go to my actual staff report, so. Um, that has come up from time to time over the last year, and, and the main issue that I've seen that has come up primarily is related to state, uh, legislation that comes to staff, and they say, if you want to oppose or promote this, you need it yesterday, and so we don't have time to come to a council meeting and say, do you want this on the agenda? Um, before we actually do it, so we, either we make the decision, how important is this item to us as a city, and either put it on or don't put it on. And so just trying to figure out, uh, what, what other cities do is they actually establish, which I'll say right up front, I don't think we have time to do, a, a legislative priorities uh, document that they do, and then that kind of, uh, they draw up on that to determine what they put on their agenda and what they write letters for and, and don't. So I'm, I'm just looking for a direction. I, I will say that there was one item, and I don't even remember what the item was, but one council member asked, how did this get on the agenda? And I said, well, we felt it was important, and so we brought it before the council, and I, I don't want to be in that position. Um, I'm hoping that the things we bring to the council are things that are your priorities also. And so I wanna, wanted to just explore this. Is there a way to determine? I, I can't poll you. I can't say, hey, do you want this on the agenda? That's against the Brown Act, so I won't do that. But, um, I, I, I guess what I'm saying is I, I don't really have a good answer for it, but, but I thought I'd put the question there, so.
How often do you get the legislative
When, when they're in session, it can come quite often, actually. I, we could get it. Sometimes it will be a couple of weeks, and then it may go a month before I receive another one, so it happens, but.
So would we be amiss trying to make it maybe a quarterly review of legislative changes?
Yeah.
Or would that be too long?
Well, the problem is, I guess we could, um, like I say, we don't have the opportunity to really follow those real close. It's usually when we get something mainly from the League of California Cities and says, hey, this, this bill is going to committee next week. We need, uh, letters of support or opposition, whichever it may be, and there's really very little time at that point to determine what we do. Sometimes we can get it on, we can just put it on the agenda. Uh, if we feel strongly about it as a staff, we usually will put it on the agenda, but.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just kind of referring to, um, Pioneer Energy would, usually the way they do it is they have somebody from staff that will bring the top ten or whatever legislative items that relate basically, obviously, to Pioneer Energy.
items that relate basically, obviously to Pioneer Energy to the meeting. And they do that, I would say, once a quarter, if not twice.
Yeah.
I don't know if that helps or not, or helps give you.
We could see if we can, if we can get that. It's just, you know, time to, time to put the report.
Well, that's the, I mean, yeah, that's the challenge because, for example, on transportation and Woody, Woody Deloria does this and I do it, but there's already a, a system in place and we get, I forget who sends us this stuff, that basically they've called out all the transportation related legislation that's going on down in Sacramento on the assembly and on the senate side. And then they, they kind of do a little, you know, synopsis of it. And then we get that every meeting. It's in his executive director's report, but it's real easy to do because you just cut and paste. I mean, you grab it, it's, someone's already doing it. And I'm assuming somebody does that at the league for stuff that would be important to the city. But then it's like, you know, you have to read it. You have to say, okay, I think this is important. You know, you're still going through that same process. It might, it might take the aha moment out of it, you know, in the sense that you, we will have known that there is legislation sitting out there that could impact us and it won't just be reacting to something that comes over the transom. But, and I'm assuming that that is the case for general, just, you know, stuff that goes on for cities and counties. I know we get it for transportation.
I guess the other question I should have asked first is, does the council perceive a problem or are you fine with the way things are?
Yeah.
I think occasionally, maybe we're all going to get rubbed the wrong way, but in terms of efficiency and being realistic with staff time, I really think it's a problem.
No, no. And, and honestly, in transportation, like for my slice of, of the universe, I've already shared that with my commissioners. And so when something does come across, it's like oppose, support, I already know what they're thinking. So I feel fairly confident I could write, you know, I could pound out a letter and with my name on it and say, here, you know, this is what we, we oppose or we, we support. I think you understand pretty much where we are at. Then it begs the question is, how important is it to throw one more letter into the pile of letters that, that they're out there and do we want you to, I don't want to say waste your time, but spend your time dealing with that?
Well, I'm comfortable the way it is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't perceive a problem.
Our city manager, when he thinks it's really important, when it's forward or.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with legislation. I think for me, and this might be referring to me, but I think when it's like propositions that are going to.
That's different.
That's very different. And so I, I don't really want to take a position on something that's going to the public for vote. But if we're talking about something that's legislation by our state, then I feel very differently about that.
Yeah. No, I would agree with that.
We all in agreement?
And I think that's what came before us, actually, was a proposition.
I think it was Prop 36.
Yeah, it was a proposition.
Yeah, it was the proposition, yeah.
So I'm just saying, this might be referring to me because I had an issue.
I didn't want to pick on you, Nicole, but that was the one that we, we did come up. So yeah, yeah.
I think it's okay the way it is.
So we just won't do propositions as that we're in agreement with?
You know, we'll, we'll leave that up.
Measures?
We hire folks like you to kind of read the tea leaves and decide what we think might be important. So yeah, propositions is a little tough because, well, you know, already know what I think about most propositions. But legislation, we certainly should, we should be aware of the legislation, I think. Wait, propositions are.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Half the time they end up in court.
My, my issue was with it being on a proposition. I don't have a problem writing letters on legislation.
Legislation, yeah.
At all.
Okay, okay.
You're trying to convince our representative to vote a certain way, that's very different than trying to convince all the people of California to do something.
Yes, to do anything for them. Okay. So is that, so, so legislation, good, propositions eh, not so much. Okay, all right.
And then the, the second question was, is kind of related, but it's asking if there, if a council member wants to request something beyond the agenda. And, and most of the time when that happens, I will ask you to do it during a council meeting.
But it might, there might be occasions.
There may be a time sensitive item that may come up that we need to determine. I need to work with the council and say, well, and think about what other opposition may there be from other council. Kind of the same situation. I don't want another council member to come say, well, how did this get on the agenda? I wouldn't have asked for it to be on. So anyway, just along the same lines, is there something you want to change there or do you just want to keep it the way it is going?
Yeah, I, I haven't, I haven't had, I haven't noticed a situation that made me angry. So, you know, just give us time. Okay. Since we, okay, so we're all good with that too? Okay. Since we reopen this, does anybody from the public like to comment on the stuff that we already commented on about this two items, these two things?
The only thing I thought about with the stuff that you get Cleve to bring to the council, the mayor and the vice mayor, you could ask them if they thought it was appropriate. And the other thing is some communities have a thing where if a council member wants to have something on the agenda, they need to write up a little memo and submit it at the meeting. So it's a little more formal than just what do you think and yes or no, or you don't have time to think about it, so.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we're good. Thank you. Okay. Now, now. 6.1. Review and discuss options for funding the proposed public safety building. Mr. Morris.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know we've had this, these discussions a little bit in the past. We had a joint meeting with the fire district board and went through this and actually accepted this document, our needs assessment. So I wanted to, tonight to, while we were all meeting anyway, to talk about a couple of things and this is one of them, and go through where we are to date, maybe get some direct, not some direction because you can't, we're not voting tonight, but just a discussion about maybe options of how we proceed from where we are right now. So I'll run through this slideshow right quick. This is just to kind of talk about the things we're going to do. So go ahead, Dave. So what we've done so far, we, the, the needs assessment was actually completed back in November of 2022. So we're two years old now. We identified the preferred site, which is on Ray Lawyer Drive. We refer to it as the oding property. I think most of you know, everybody know where that is. It's actually down on Placerville Drive and it extends up to Ray Lawyer Drive. So it's about a 40 acre parcel, right, Melissa? Which we don't need 40 acres, but we've identified how we would subdivide that and take our, about six acres and then sell the rest of that for further development. That's our preferred site. We've done that. Last year, we received, I should say, the fire district received a million dollars towards this project, primarily towards site acquisition. And we've looked at that, we've looked at the price, looked at where we are with that particular situation. And then Melissa put out an RFP for site analysis, which includes environmental utilities, et cetera. And I put this number without calling you, Melissa, it was about 700, $750,000, is that correct? Just to do this analysis. And we, we haven't done that yet. We've held off for a few reasons in looking at what our options are and how we want to proceed. So that's one point that you need to be aware of, that just to do that environmental work, further analysis of the site, utilities and et cetera. One of the things, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, there are not utilities, water or sewer to that site, or just sewer. Sewer does not come past the site. So it would have to extend up from down towards Placerville Drive, correct? So that's one of the things, analysis, we need to determine, yes.
Just, we're talking about the oding property, but up on top at Ray Lawyer Drive. That's what we're talking about.
On Ray Lawyer Drive.
I mean, there's no, I mean, the sewers, isn't there sewer at the county?
Yeah, I just got away.
Well, no, but I mean, can't we just like tap into the county? I mean, the buildings are there. The building, I'm sorry, I should talk to the people that know.
It's about, it's, this site that we're looking at is about halfway between the county buildings and Placerville Drive.
Oh, well.
We'd have to extend it either way.
Well, no, I, I know where the, the property, it starts up on Ray Lawyer and then it goes down the back of the hill and around and, and then that's that big thing down there by the creek.
The site we're primarily looking at is toward the, I would call it the west end of that property on Ray Lawyer Drive.
On the, on the Ray Lawyer Drive side. Yeah, right, right.
Yeah. But it's still, it's, it's down a ways from where the county buildings are.
County?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm assuming the county sewer is in Fairlane. Do you know, or?
Some of it is in the apartment.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay. Well, the apartment buildings are on the sewer, aren't they? Uh, so we just can't, it's not big enough to, I'm sorry, I don't want to get into the inside baseball part of this, but I'm just, I'm struggling.
That's the problem. Those are the details that we, we need to study.
Stop me, just stop me. Well, I understand that part, but I'm just, stop me. Okay, great. Go.
All right, Dave, you want to go to the next slide? Again, work to date, we analyzing the site and we did explore other potential sites came up. We will mention the, what's it called, the Hupsey Building, Midtown Mall, we call it. We looked, that's for sale. I think it may have sold now or it may be in escrow anyway. But we looked at that as a potential. In the end, the more we looked at it, though, we determined, you know, try to figure out how to fit fire bays in there and still have the parking that we need, created an issue for us and we determined that it was not, not a feasible site for us to use. Nice site as we toured it, had a lot of pluses to it that would have worked well for police and fire, but there were other obstacles that we didn't fill. So we, we reviewed all of that and looked at different things. We've explored funding options and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, as I mentioned, Melissa put out the RFP for the site analysis, which we received proposals, or just one proposal, didn't we? And we still have some questions about, is it really that much money to do what we need to do? So we, we haven't awarded that, that proposal. So, oh, I hope you have your document for you because that is definitely too small to see. And that is on page, somebody gets to it first, tell me.
Page 58?
Thank you.
I think, I'm just, the color.
Yeah, that's it. Page 58. Thank you. So what this outlines is the options that we considered in our needs analysis, which are, do we do the combined facility, number one? And the combined facility, the range of costs, budget estimate was from 43 million to 66 million for a combined facility. So 43 to 66. If we separated those out and said, well, no, we can't do that, we're just going to do a police facility only and then either the fire does their own or we work with fire to figure out what they do. The police facility only is, has a range of 27 to 38 million and the fire facility has a range of 22 to 29 million. Overall, if you add those up, you will find that the joint facility is a little bit cheaper, not a lot, about $2 to $3 million cheaper than if we were to do, you know, individual facilities for both. So that gives you kind of where we're at numbers wise and what we're, what our concerns are. The lowest number of 43 mil, or even the lower number for the police of 27 million is, that's a big number. So, yeah, David, you want to turn to the next slide? So for example, if we did a joint facility of 43 million, the, the debt service on that, if we didn't get any grant funding and we were only doing, just doing the joint facility and we got it done for the lowest cost, debt service is about $2.2 million a year. I will tell you, I don't, we don't have that in our budget right now to spend 2.2 million a year. Some of the things we've looked at, we've looked at grants, loans, bonds. We primarily looked at the federal rural development program for facilities, public facilities, which we do qualify for. And in fact, as I mentioned in my staff report, they do have a provision for grants if you qualify under household income requirements and et cetera, there are grants. However, when I called and talked to them, I said, well, what about your grant program? It says, oh, we don't have any money in the grant program. It was kind of like, we never do. It wasn't just right now, but it was kind of like, we don't do grants, even though on their website, it does say they're available. So I won't count that out and there's a range of those going from 35% to, up to 50% depend, actually, it starts around 15, 35 and 50, I think are the three ranges that you could get grant funding for. It may be available, who knows if we were to push that further, but in our conversation with them, they said there is no grant funding, even though our website says there is. So I didn't push that any further than that, but, so there may be the possibility of getting grant funding to reduce that 43 million or whatever that top number is. Then you talk about, let's say that we did get, you know, 20% of that 43 million off. That takes down to what, 35 million, 34 million, something like that? So, and so maybe your number goes down to one and a half million, say, for your debt service. Still a big number. So regardless, we need to look at something. So our next question was, okay, we need to look for new sources of revenue and what can we do if we want to proceed with, with this program the way we have it? And, and I threw a few up there. Sales tax is probably the obvious one that is out there that's, I'll say, difficult, but maybe the easiest when you talk about to achieve what you want to achieve. You could do a new TOT, but that's a pretty small amount. I think I figured for every 1% we raise, our TOT would be about $20,000 in revenue. Parcel tax is another one, very difficult to, to pass. Utility user tax is another possibility, but difficult to pass and, and not a lot, not a big amount of rev, wouldn't reach the revenue amounts you want to do. And then the other one that's been talked about a lot is could, do we look at annexation, maybe to our west, into the county and some of those areas that's been talked about in the past to try to bring in some of that area in where we would realize the revenue. Now, you understand we realize the revenue, but we also realize the expenses when we do that in terms of streets, roads, police, et cetera, to, to cover that area. So this is just a discussion. I don't have a recommendation for you, just I wanted to get this out there so that everybody understands where we look at. We do have, as I mentioned early, earlier in our strategic plan, we have a, a strategy that says, we're going to try to do this, public safety facility. And so we have been looking at it and trying for the last couple of years and I haven't, I've tasked Dave with finding the money tree and he hasn't found it yet, so. So I will end there. I can answer more questions. There's a lot in this. I, I will point to, at the very end of this document, there is a space needs affiliate assessment that was done prior to us doing this work by another company. And this was when we were looking at potentially doing something with our existing facility somehow to make that work. And I, I'm going to say this and I've told Tim this already without upsetting Tim and our, our fire people that we love. You know, if we tried to do something to accommodate police and to make it work for them at that current site, it would probably mean finding a new location for the fire engines that, that part there. So that's, that's the other side of that, if we do something. Back in 2014, when this study was updated, there were a few different options that were looked at for costs and actually they were quite a bit less than, but it was for police only. And I'm trying to find that, but they ranged from six to about nine million. And that was in 2014, so you, if you want to do some math, figure out what the inflation is 10, 10, 11 years from now, it's probably doubled, maybe I would guess at this point. So anyway, I just want to throw that, those just things for us to think about and we can, I'd like to hear your comments about this in the public and, and where we are. And then we can talk more about, you know, maybe we bring it back on a future agenda to get further direction from, from council.
So, I mean, we, we sort of know what a, God, I, on the sales tax side, we know that what a half a percent generates a couple million bucks a year. The give or take, I mean, yeah.
What, are you talking about a?
Sales tax.
Half cent?
Yeah, half cent.
Half cent is about three?
2.8.
2.8.
So 3 million, okay.
One point it was over three, now it's.
Well, you know, it comes and goes, but you know, I remember when we first talked about Mezrel, we were shooting at $2 million a year. That was the benchmark at the time, so it's obviously more than that now.
Right.
But then you start getting into that rarefied era, the sales tax and even though there's, I mean, I guess you could get your sales tax so dang high that people would stop buying things. even though there's, I mean, I guess you could get your sales tax so danged high that people would stop buying things, but... So, so, sales tax is one option. The TOT, no, we don't have enough transient occupancy to talk about that. The only other one up there that looks like it could even, is would be a parcel tax. You'd propose something, so if you, I guess maybe to raise the same amount of money, two, two-point-eight million, whatever. How much per parcel are we talking about? Give or take?
I haven't done that.
Do the math in your head, come on. Mr. Warren, you're a numbers guy, let's go. Well, how many parcels are there, this is easy.
Normally, you don't, from what I've seen, those type of, of parcel taxes, you don't do a flat rate, you do a dollars per hundred thousand.
I underst, I understand that, but let's just, and we're talking... Right. But I, I like to work from the gross numbers and then we can start to refine it. So, if you have like four thousand parcels in town and you want to raise two-point-eight million bucks, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. It's seven hundred, seven hundred bucks a parcel. A year. Oh, no, no, I, I know that, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think this thing through in my head because, or you do a combo, yes, or, you know. I mean, obviously, the one to me is the sales tax, you can, we've, we've... It's how you get a, well, I know, well, I've, well, you know, I worked on one, I've worked on two, actually, so I was part of that. How much? Four hundred dollars per par, and that's if you don't, so we were...
Yeah, that's, that's annually.
Four hundred bucks, which is still a lot of money. I mean, for, I don't, you know. But then if you do it on the per one-hundred, then that would, it'd change it, more expensive homes would be more, I'm sure we could probably figure it out fairly quickly, what, what it would look like, the universe of it. I mean, we've always been, we've been able to sell sales tax because, as we all know, more of our sales tax get paid by people that don't live here. So, there's a little bit of that. I just don't know how many times you can go to that, well. Otherwise, there's no way to fund this thing. No practical way to fund it, as far as, unless somebody else has, like, the money tree, or can think of a way of generating revenue that comes beyond that. And the one challenge with, I mean, yes, annexation, Missouri Flat Road, that ship sailed decades ago, but most of the sales tax on Missouri Flat Road right now is tied up going into Missouri Flat Interchange and projects. So, it's really debatable, if you, if, even if you took it all over, assuming you cannot change the sales taxing structure down on Missouri Flat Road, you wouldn't see any money coming out of that for a while anyway, unless you raise the sales tax, and then you're just back where you were before. And then you got to do the revenue sharing thing with the county, which would take ten or fifteen, I forget what the, LAFCO would...
It's like ten years.
Ten years, it's a ten-year program, so... Before you see any money, and that's if you see any money, because they already directed all that money to go towards the infrastructure down there. Yeah. We should, but I'm, well, I'm just, we got to talk a little bit about this, so... Well, yeah, you start to, you start to get to the rarefied air.
Well, I mean, the other part of the sales tax, you, you raise it right now and then, you know, does the debt service go up? Because costs go up.
I don't explain that?
Well, anyway, so, does the debt service go up over time, does the debt service?
Oh, right, 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 yeah, we've already, we, we're living in a situation where the sales tax growth isn't matching the other growth, but at least it would get you the money.
Start.
Initially.
Initially.
Then you could deal with the other, okay. Am I done talking? Yes. Hold on, let me get the microphone here. We would like to open this up to the public now, if you have comments on this item.
Hi, I suggest we spend the million dollars before everything else goes up and buy that, that parcel first. Because, and then, second, we need to explore the grants that are out there. That, because that's going to change what you're going to have to borrow and what you might need as a sales tax. It would have to be a specific sales tax with two-thirds of the voters who would agree to it, so. And, and I'm on the fire board, so we're looking at, you know, we're annexing Diamond Springs Fire Department, and so, Chief Cordero wants to talk about this, we may not need as much of the office space as that. So, we could cut back maybe the building size, but, I mean, I'm, but first, let's buy the land, see what we can get in grant funding, and then we'll see where we end up in another probably six, eight months in terms of the annexation of Diamond Springs, because we have enough space there to maybe keep a lot of it, but we do need, Station Twenty-Five is ridiculous, so. We need to improve that, and whatever we can do to move that, maybe that's what we do, but I think, let's get the land first and get that done, and because, we can't do anything else with that million bucks. It's, I don't think, we can't use it to improve the police station, it's got to be, it's got to be a joint facility. No, no, it's in the city. We, we gave it to the city, so... That's all, but I'd say, maybe Chief Cordero could talk about, maybe there's a savings in space, but I mean, we haven't completed that yet, but I'd still go get the grant.
Go get the, buy the land, okay, anybody else?
My guess is that between the time that this first came up for you and now, one of the big changes is that public doesn't like big spending. That's a, and, and the talk of sales taxes doesn't seem like it's politically wise to do for those who want to get reelected. So, you might want to reassess the approach. For example, my understanding is that when this was first proposed, having a public safety facility, that the efficiency was that both departments would use the same kind of exercise equipment. But logically, they operate differently. The police department, I believe, has patrols, three shifts a day, out in the field, whereas the sher, the fire department responds when it's needed. And it's helpful for them to have fire trucks at different locations throughout the area. So, you, you, you might want to consider scaling back your vision. For example, right now at the police department, you've got the fire trucks right next door. Wouldn't it be great to have the police department expand, uh, that space and use it? Because then you'd have a central location for them to operate out of. And I, I don't know how your arrangement is with the fire department, but aren't they paid for by the county? I mean, don't they, I mean, when a fire happens, do they just stop right at the city limits, or do they go beyond? So, we should be getting some money from the county because we don't get much from them already. So, I just think that maybe it'd be a good idea to start reassessing your, your plan because it's a lot of money, and this is not the political environment where people are going to be excited about spending forty-three million dollars. And I don't know how it is for the government, but in private, whatever they tell you as an estimate for cost, it never turns out to be the, the same. So, if you think it's going to be forty-three million, good luck. Anyway, I'm just suggesting that you might want to readjust your plan instead of a big consolidated facility. That's it?
I have a couple of questions. Who, who owns the property next to the police station now, where there used to be a house and it burned down? And then, would the police station and the fire station both be sold if you build another facility? And then on that forty acres, I don't know how much you can sell the rest of it for, and I like to dream, so I could see part of that facility being used for a gym for the city, for the recreation department, not part of the facility, part of the property. And also, the county needs to look into building a new senior center. And so, I didn't know about possibilities of that land being used for other things or being sold and how much it would bring in.
Owns the land next to?
We, we, we own the land. There are actually two parcels.
Yeah.
To the west of the police station, the city owns both of those. One is a long, narrow one, goes all the way up, the other one is, goes part of the way up and there's a house on the, on the upper side.
Right, right.
We actually, back in about two thousand fifteen, sixteen, after the two thousand fourteen analysis, we purchased that property when it came up for sale. The, the, one immediately next to the police station in anticipation of someday expanding that and building there, so.
Right, okay. Can, can staff clarify exactly what can we spend that one million dollars on? What are, what are the options? Land acquisition is kind of a, a broad term.
I'll, I'll leave it, I think anything related to land acquisition, Tim, you actually obtained that, if you want to respond to that more, but I think that's the answer.
Surprisingly, when we received the, the check and the letter from the state, it was very broad of, it was for land acquisition for a public safety building. There, it was, it was literally like two short paragraphs. Thankfully.
Yeah. Okay. The, the way I see it, what we've discovered is, is that if we try to build something on our own property next to the facility we already have, we'd almost certainly, from the report and just from anybody that's ever been in that building, we would be doing some major reconstruction to the existing building, plus, we would also then have to build something on the parcel next door, and we were already, because that could be twenty million bucks. Pretty much. So, I'm not sure, even though, it's like everything else, if we had done this twenty years ago, it would have made more sense. But now, the town and everything has grown to the point, and our responsibilities have grown to the point where I don't think working with that building, um, yeah, that's it, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do anything with that building, you would literally tear it down and build another building there, and then that gets you back to, well, then what are we doing? I am intrigued by the idea, because the other, the funny thing was with the, with the consolidation of us and Diamond Springs, that building is very, and there's other building, I mean, that's a very nice facility they have over there, so I started thinking, well, how much of Twenty-Five, some of that stuff can go over there to improve, and, and then what, well, we absolutely have to have something in the city. So, then maybe our joint facility, if it were to come to pass, would not be as big.
Yeah, and, and we did, Tim and I did talk about that, and we all agree, since they're, since they're joining together the annexation of Diamond Springs, they have a great administration department over there, and so we could reduce the size in terms of administration at this facility. I, I do want to point out, as much as I love Joe and his, his, his police station needs, needs work, it really is that fire station that needs work.
Oh, yeah, well, the fire station is.
It's, uh, it, it, they are so restricted there, and they better not change the size of those trucks anymore, they're not going to fit in the garage.
Yes, yeah.
Just, it, it is, it is so small, it was never designed to be a full-service fire station, it was always volunteer, and the way they've rigged it to make it work, they make it work and they do a great job with it, but that really is the biggest issue we have right now is with that fire station.
Well, and, uh, just another perspective also, you know, you, you mentioned earlier about that, this public safety building being in our strategic plan. We also have a strategy to minimize debt, and we are talking about with this one project more than doubling the city's current debt load.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm pretty debt averse, um, just in life in general, and, um, yeah, I'd be hard-pressed to, to more than double the city's debt load for a public safety building, but that's just my, you know, personal opinion. But that is also in our strategic plan, since you, you, you know, since you brought that up, is that we're not supposed to be spending, or putting ourselves in debt either.
Well, it just brings us back to the problem. Go tour that police station, go tour that fire department, and we can't do nothing, that's not an option either. So, the question is, what are we going to do? What is the path forward? Because at some point, no one's going to want to work in the city of Placerville under those conditions. I mean, that, that's going to be our reality eventually if we're not moving towards doing something.
Our, our, our vision plan, whatever was in the binder here, also says that we're supposed to keep everybody safe and their quality of life together and all that other stuff, and, you know. One of the challenges when you have a town that, you know, things, some things get set in stone, like your police department's building, and everything grows around it, and you make do and make do and make do. And I think we're at a point now where we can't make do. You know, and, and it, you know, it's not like, i-if we were to pursue this and if we were to make debt, it's not like we're trying to hang gargoyles on City Hall. I mean, we would be building a piece of infrastructure that would serve the public safety needs of the community. And so, therefore, sometimes you go into debt because you, you need to do that in order to do everything else you want to do. We're not going to solve that problem right this minute, but I think what we need is some direction to our staff. And I would be willing, I mean, I don't know how much we can actually tell you without violating rules, but my gut tells me, I, I agree with Mr. Kaiserman in the sense that if we're going to move on this piece of property, we should move on this piece of property. So, that should then become a thing. And then we should start to look at refining our vision of exactly what we need to take care of our obligations to the public, and then talk about the financing side of it. You know, but come back with a framework, I guess, maybe? I don't know what you had anticipated or wanted, what did you want besides us talking?
Well, I was hoping you're all going to open up your checkbooks and get some money, but I guess that's not happening, so.
I, I could, yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah.
No, I, I think that, I mean, a good discussion, we've, we've heard you, and, um, maybe it gives us an opportunity to, and we can go back and bring forward, and maybe it needs to be a joint meeting, bring forward something to the, the council and the board, the option of purchasing the property, do we move with that?
Right, and the fire board needs to obviously be engaged as well.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Hold on, could I just make one clarifying?
You may make as many clarifying questions.
Really, just for the public awareness, so our name is a bit misleading, Eldorado County Fire.
Yeah.
We're...
Yes.
Usually references, well, you're part of county government, and I know there was a comment about going to the county fire. We are an independent special district.
Yes.
Despite our name saying Eldorado County, and I think more importantly to me, we are the city's fire department. And yes, we cover two-hundred-and-eighty-one square miles, soon to take on another sixty-five, but I, it, it means something to me that we are the city of Placerville.
Oh, yeah. Well, you, you, that, yes, I was, the very first time I ever ran for city council was when the high, the, the, when the fire department split off as its own separate thing from the city, it used to be a city department, and then it got split out ninety-two, ninety-one? Yeah, so I remember all those discussions, and they get paid for by property taxes, that's how they make their money. And if you think the county's ever going to give us money for that fire department, woo, you live in a universe I'm not familiar with.
And just, just to add on to what Tim said, I actually asked the question of Tim, I said, how often do our Engine Twenty-Five, which is housed here, how often does it go out of the city? And he let me know, that's about six hundred calls a year. But he also let me know that the Diamond Springs engine comes into the city almost six hundred times a year.
Yes, that's...
So, it's really almost a wash, we were surprised, both of us were surprised by that.
It's mutual aid, it's mutual aid, nothing stops at the boundaries of any jurisdiction, and we go out, we help people when they need help, right there! I actually, I actually asked him to run a... Yes.
You have another comment?
Okay, we're, we're kind of free-forming this here, go ahead.
Because not only the city, but the fire department paid for that feasibility study, and I asked that question in the front end. If we do this study, was there grant funding available? And Rebecca, at the time, who was the engineer, said, we could get help from the company that's going to put together this study, and there was grant. So, I don't know where that is, and maybe we should contact her and ask her where she thinks, I don't know if there is any grant funding or not, but I remember doing that, otherwise I would have said, forget it.
Right, and what I've learned, and certainly Cleve, you know this, what I have learned, and you know this as well, the first phone call you make is not the last one you make to any entity, because you'll get ten different answers and, and all that. But I think we need to start, this needs to become a serious pursuit. We've talked about it, we have a report, people have, we have needs. What's that? We have some money, and, and I think it just needs to become a, a more serious pursuit.
So, our city engineer is just reminding me that there are some studies that we have to do before we purchase the property.
Yes, yes.
For example, environmental is the big one, and the concern... For example, environmental is the big one, and the concern is once we do that, we may not have enough money to without coming up with more money to actually purchase the property. Right.
Well, right. For a well, was that 750 just for the environmental?
Yep.
I mean, what are they doing out there?
Forty acres.
Well, I know it's 40 acres, but I mean. Well, there is that.
We we had one person that was interested in it. We we met with him a couple of times. And the I I approached him on that. I said, well, how about if we jointly purchase the property? Then you will parcel it out, and you get the remainder after the six acres that we want, and he wasn't interested in pursuing that, so. There may be somebody else out there. I know of one other person that's interested in the property. And we could approach them and see if they how interested see how interested they are.
Without getting too deep into this, what did did we know what was ever on that property before?
I I don't.
Okay. It's been like it is. I, you know, like I said, I I came here in 1976. It has been this way for at least 50 years. So there's nothing been on it for 50 years. I don't know what's gone on up there. Well, I'm I'm thinking about the environmental side. I mean, you're talking about a big chunk of empty dirt. Now, they used to dump things around here like nobody's business, but okay, well, that's that supposition. Okay, come back with a plan. Come back with a plan? Come back with a framework? Come back with a?
My question is, and I'm I'm sure the answer is, yes, we've looked at anything, but are there any other properties that we can look at? Is there land up by the jail? Is the where the county is not going to build their navigation center anymore? Is that adequate for anything?
Hmm, it's not a big enough problem.
Yeah, it it may not be. I'm just saying, what are all our? Have we exhausted all the other options? Is the old Rite Aid building and the building next to it an option?
I was actually thinking of Office Max.
Yeah, I mean, that's the question. Are there any other options?
It's just a crummy.
But it's all going to come back to still. I mean, whether it costs 20 million or it's 40 million.
Yeah.
Way more million than we have or we're going to have in a certain situation. So we're going to have to have that serious conversation about how we're going to pay for that. I mean, I don't I don't say how I don't see how we move forward and say, we're not going to do this. I mean, I guess that's my question to all my fellow council members. Is there any scenario where any of you think we don't need to do this?
Not for me personally, no.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to do it, but to get a most of these things, you have to convince enough of our population to vote to do it.
Well, but you need a lot of data. You need, I mean, as we know with Mezural, you need to have tons and tons of information available that's fairly fixed, you know, like we think this is going to cost us, you know, we had a we had a capital improvement program. We said, you know, obviously, within reason, these things will cost this much money. This is how we'll do it. This will be the priorities. This is the way it'll work. That's how you that's how you you talk to people when you ask them to to give you money or anything for that matter. The problem with any other, I mean, yes, there might be other parcels in town, but you have you run into the same thing. You're going to have to do this study, and it doesn't matter where you land in this community. You're always one step away from a toxic waste dump.
Do you have to do?
Yeah.
Do you have to do this study if the building already exists?
Probably. Yeah, because you'd have to do hazardous.
Do some. It may not be as extensive is what we're talking about here, but. Yeah. Yeah.
It would. Yes. How about? Okay. Do we? Do we want to freelance ideas around where we could do this, or do we want to give our staff some direction to come back with us? Because I was thinking about where more there there used to be down there. The hospice was in that that building down there. Now, that building is not nearly big enough. But if you could. But if you, yeah, the property is not big enough, but if you could find a thing like that, then that maybe gets you past some of these studies because there's already building on it, and then you just slick it off, and then you build your building there.
Can we continue to look? Anything that comes?
Yeah.
Open that may be an option. I mean, all of us get together and make it up. Checking off the things. Some of that stuff.
And and answer your question, Councilor, no, yes, we we actually, one of our other sites was up by the jail. That was one of our optional sites.
Riggs is Riggs is probably.
And that that was probably our number two.
Which has a which has a road cut in on it now.
So it it was a possibility. I don't know that it would have any less issues than what this site has, but it was another option we looked at.
How much? God, now, okay, once again, freelancing. Vissini has that all where his warehouses are and everything behind his buildings. They're on Placerville Drive. That actually not isn't in the city, which is weird, down to down to the creek, down to Hangtown Creek. How much of that does he still use? I mean, I don't know the answer to this question, but there's all there's quite a bit of dirt down there, and there's some buildings and some things. And who knows? Anyway, we probably need to have a focus workshop or some other thing, or you folks need to come back because we have other things on the agenda we need to talk about.
Well, good discussion. It gives us some things to think about, and maybe we can come up with some some options that we can bring back to you. Chief Cordero can take back to his board, and if we do a joint meeting, we can talk about which way we do it, and then try and get some direction where we want to go. So, as I say, I knew we weren't. I was hoping, but I knew we weren't going to solve this tonight.
Right.
Good discussion.
Okay, thank you. More of the same. 6.2 Review and discuss options for funding the citywide broadband fiber program. Mr. Morris.
And I'm going to turn this over to my senior management analyst, Steve McCarter, who's the man behind the curtain on the camera, and he's going to do this presentation. Do you want to use this one?
Okay. I'm going to try to do this standing up here. As we talked about, we're just about the the broadband that we're looking into in terms of the find findings. Just want to make sure you're clear that the the pricing, the the costs that we've outlined here in a reasonable ballpark, but they have yet to be completely flushed out at this point in time. We're working with our city attorneys and financial experts to look at the additional options, and so we'll go over those when we when we get to that point of the presentation. It is kind of fitting that we look at everything here as what we're talking about now. The the a lot of words going out in terms of strategy, in terms of of economic development, things like that. Those are the kind of things that broadband, I think, can bring to the city of Placerville. We know that broadband access is as transformative as electricity. It's something that I think is is becoming more and more of a necessity, and we're going to go over those points. If you look at it as an essential infrastructure, electricity provided a wave of industrial and social advancements. The fiber optic network is going to be able to do the same. Education, health care, it's going to provide economic development. As we look about our lives, our daily lives, things are continually enhancing and being increased in terms of technology, and it's becoming more and more necessary to actually conduct business and grow. It's a catalyst for innovation. Electricity brought about new appliances, computers, everything that made our life a little easier, more productive. Fiber Internet is going to be the same thing in terms of AI, Internet of Things. More and more people have a Ring Doorbell, for instance. Those are the kind of things that start happening, and as you start adding more and more of those those devices onto the systems, the existing systems are going to become more and more bogged down. Fiber is going to help solve that problem. And of course, there's the impact on daily life. We know what happened through COVID. The struggles that some kids went through because they couldn't access the Internet, couldn't access their education opportunities. It also opens opportunity for remote work, telemedicine, online education, and global collaboration for for business owners. So we're faced with a crossroad of which way we're going to take in in Placerville. The economic and financial benefits is that we were fortunate enough to receive a $20 million grant. That's going to be a significant opportunity. That covers 54% of our total costs of being able to wire essentially the entire city. So we're going to look at some of the options about doing that. It's going to be a lower cost for residents. It's an open access model. We're to look at revenue or future cost avoidance. Obviously, we all know it's a struggle sometimes when we have to to delay projects and things like that. Costs only get higher and higher. There's also minimal or minimized financial risk if we do a citywide project versus a voluntary, and again, we'll get into that. I did some quick studies on on some studies. There's one in particular developed by an outfit called Corey Center for Innovations, a rural innovations, and they compared rural counties that utilized a high fiber utilization versus those that had a lower one. Business growth rates were 213% higher. Self-employment growth rates 10% higher, per capita income growth rates 18% higher, and then GDP growth rates at 44% higher. So there's a significant amount of benefit to a fiber network. Reduces economic disadvantages. It helps mitigate underemployment and business closures, builds wealth and prosperity for existing as well as new residents that might want to come in. And it means for students especially, I think this is important, to provide for for new students and kids as they get to that age of deciding where they want to go to college. Do they have the opportunity? Are they going to have to leave the area to go get that education or get that other job? You know, there's there's benefits to keeping people here within the city. There's also a big thing, home values. Home values have shown, especially here in California, to go up 5% for those homes that have fiber availability.
Speed fiber has been a game changer for our family. I was able to enroll in an online certification program and transition from working a minimum wage job to a well-paying remote tech support position. This never would have been possible with the slow Internet we had before.
Thanks to reliable high-speed Internet, I was able to start a small online business selling homemade crafts. The ability to handle orders, manage inventory, and connect with customers wouldn't have been feasible without fiber broadband. It's broad income and opportunity for my family.
Before fiber broadband, I had to drive 30 miles to the nearest town with decent Wi-Fi just to upload my work as a freelance graphic designer. Now I can take on clients from around the world and work from home, which has completely changed my quality of life.
Again, it is an essential infrastructure. It's vital today. It's electricity. Is technology going away? Absolutely not. Our dependence on it is only growing as we go day by day. Look at how times have changed here in 2025 in here in Placerville. And it really wasn't that long ago, when you think about it, when we started like this. It's it's quite a stark change. Now, I want you to remember was everybody had a telephone in their house, you know, what happened to that? Payphones on every corner, about VHS tapes, CDs. We can forget a weekly trip. I went every week with the family to get movies. CDs or floppy disks, rather. And if you've heard this. Okay, that's enough. Those those of you that know that sound know exactly what it means.
Living in a rural area, I never thought I'd see Internet speeds like this. Upgrading to fiber allowed me to access educational resources and online classes I couldn't use before. It's opened so many opportunities for learning and growth.
When I first learned how to use the Internet, I was skeptical. But now I can stay in touch with my children and grandchildren through video calls. It's kept me connected to the people I love.
Growing up without reliable Internet, I didn't realize how many resources were out there. Now I can access medical advice, financial tools, and courses that are helping me build a better life for myself and my family.
I thanks to the Internet, I've reconnected with old friends and family, discovered communities that share my interests, and found support networks that have made me feel less alone. It's more than technology. It's connection.
Without the Internet, I wouldn't have been able to access telemedicine services when I needed them most. It's not just convenience. It's about health, safety, and opportunity.
Access to reliable Internet has given my kids a brighter future. They can explore the world through online learning, access tutoring, and even participate in virtual science projects. It's helping them dream bigger.
Obviously, the risks, lower income growth rates, increased business closures, population decline, economic resilience, and opportunities are going to be limited, and the stagnating population. That's that's real critical for a city. So when we look at the the network and why we think we should invest in one, history shows us that technology evolves. All those items that we talked about no longer exist. They're obsolete, and yet it wasn't that long ago when we were relying on all of those. So in my mind, the lesson is clear. Communities that don't embrace the emergency emerging technologies risk being left behind. The fiber networks are going to provide that long-term means to be able to provide education, health care, business, and innovation for decades to come. It is a long-term infrastructure. So this is all good and well, but how are we going to pay for it? This is where we're going to get down to a couple of different options. Again, we'll need to flesh out, but what we'll do is we'll look at the opportunities. The project costs in total, if we redo the entire city, is $37 million. However, that grant reduces it by 54%, which is a significant, and that's going to provide backbone, if you will, for the entire city. It's going to run pretty much from the west to the east of the city. So therefore, we've got a need of $17 million. Again, we're never going to have that opportunity to have that much money come in and help build out the entire city, so that's something that I just want to point out. Two financing options that we have to grapple with is one would be 100% participation rate and then the voluntary one. When we look at a 100% option, the pros are going to be it's going to obviously, a couple of years ago, the council had instituted a Placerville Broadband Utility. Right now, it's it's not really being used, but that's going to activate that. 100% of the residents will have a at a minimum, a very low Internet access with the option to upgrade. We have minimal administrative costs. Payments would be collected via tax assessment. Loans secured by utility fee assessment. More advantageous financing costs as a result. Majority of residents, even when you factor in the cost of that bond repayment, will have a net gain or lower costs for their Internet over what they're currently paying at a significantly better performance level. And again, the benefit of doing something sooner rather than later is that as we're building out the the grant section that's paid for, we're going to have construction crews here. To have them to come back at a later date is just going to cost more. There's some financial certainty to being able to say, let's just do the whole city right now and get it done with. And then all the economic benefits that we talked about, the the potential for growth rates and and what have you. Just to be clear, that this network does provide long-lasting infrastructure. The costs are going to be pretty much minimal. There's minimal signal degradation. Also, the fact that it's completely underground is going to prevent a lot of the outages that might come because of weather-related things. So it's it's real critical, especially when we talk about potential fires, communication, things like that. Those are the kind of things that this this fiber can bring. Now, this is where things change on a daily basis. We we just talked with our attorneys yesterday. The Prop 218 option is probably not going to be on the table, especially here in California. But it would basically what we're looking at, some of the options is a fee levied against all parcels in the city. We require a majority vote. There's potential, obviously, for a percentage of the population to be against it, and we might need to look at creating special hardship cases for people that qualify for income problems or things like that, but that's something that we can work through. problems or things like that, but that's something that we can work through. The assumptions we did is that, again, 100% on all parcels in the city, secured by a tax assessment. It would be a 30-year bond, includes the cost of passing. So basically, we're passing through or passing by every property in the city. However, there would be some drop costs, and we'll explain that in a little bit. When the bond is paid off, obviously, those capital recovery costs go away. So what would it cost for an average user to come through? We're going to break this down a little better when we look at businesses versus residents, but this is just an all-in-one kind of thing right now. So capital recovery costs would work out to about $193 a year on each parcel. The internet service provider for a 1 gig speed, which is significantly higher than most people are getting now, would be $8.95. Network maintenance would be $25, so $50 for the average consumer on what they're getting. And if you factor in an $80 average cost that people are paying right now through Comcast or AT&amp;T, they're still saving almost $30 right there. So installation costs, this is a big thing. $950 is what we're looking at right now, and that's for the drop line from the main line, the passings into the home. And what we'll do is, the city could also finance that. I know we've talked about three, five, 10-year terms. Again, that's going to be fleshed out and decided what we can or can't do, or what we want or want to do, obviously. So the voluntary options, the pros are obviously, only those that want to participate would pay. Those that don't want, opt out. You still retain a lower overall cost of service for those that volunteer, at least for the initial sign-ups. As obviously as it goes out, we get a lot of more uncertainty that happens in terms of bringing crews back and things like that. So costs could go up. Can provide for partial loans to pay for the entire installation costs upfront, or they could amortize that however they want. Cons, there'd be significant increase administrative expenses to the city, uncertain loan amounts, potential need for multiple loans in order to do this as we go through time, higher interest rates as a result, costs, unforeseen regrets. In a lot of the cities that I've talked to, that's one of the biggest things that come back. People, they're given an opportunity to sign up, and they said, okay, if we pass up, it's gone. They come back after a year, they see what their neighbors are doing, and they're going, oh my God, I wish I had done something. And they're having to face the extra costs and things like that. Potential loss of economic growth, financial uncertainty, all these things are part of what we've got to really take in consideration of. So what a voluntary option would be is going to be, we're going to have a lower capital amount, obviously, because we're going to have less. We're assuming we can get 60% that say, I want to sign up for this. That's an aggressive number, but we feel that that's a realistic number that we can get over the long haul. So consequently, the capital costs are going to go to $23 for each. The internet service is going to go up a little bit because now the internet service providers that are providing the service have a smaller pool to draw from, so they need to adjust their costs accordingly. Maintenance costs to the city is not going to change, so really, what we're looking is $59, not that much more. And they're still saving money at about $20 based on the average $80 bill they're paying right now. And the drop costs are going to be the same kind of situation. So side by side, this is just a number to take a look at. I just wanted you to see the differences right there. In closing, basically, we've got the economic, financial benefits, grant funds making this a unique opportunity, lower cost for residents, future cost avoidance, and minimal financial risk. Broadband is a necessary infrastructure in my belief, economic growth and retention, and equity and access. You're not going to have customers, one part of town saying, I'm paying $50, another saying, well, how come they're paying 50, I got to pay 80? It's just, makes it cleaner that way. Strategic leadership and vision, it's future-proofing the city. We need to demonstrate foresight, avoiding a patchwork future. Broader impacts, emergency preparedness, communications, all those things I talked about, and environmental benefits as well. Less driving, people are utilizing the telemedicine a lot more, so there's a lot less driving and needing to go downtown to get some medical advice. So the opportunity, and I believe is the future's now. With that, I will leave you guys with the opportunity to ask any questions. We'll try to do our best to answer them.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. That was quite something. Do we have any questions or comments right now? Okay. Yeah. Your brow is knitted and furrowed. Okay. Okay, yes. I'm going to say what I'm going to say as a comment. I think, I shouldn't say that. I'm going to wait for the public. Anybody? Yeah, I know you want to talk, yeah.
So I've been involved in broadband since way back when, when we first did this feasibility study, and I've been on peak regarding broadband for years. And I've seen this all the way through, and I'd like to thank Steve for putting all this together. It's a big project. But I think this is going to be one of the biggest economic benefits to the city. You want to get more sales tax revenue, which drives the revenue stream for the city. We need to bring more businesses in, and we will bring more business in here if we have fiber. And, I mean, there's two ways to go. Personally, I think if we get, there's financing issues, I believe, and we could ask Dave Warren on that if we go out in sections and try to finance it. I think if we, and we also have a time commitment on this. We have to spend that money in 18 months, right? So 18, and it started on January 1st. On 17th? Okay, January 17th.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have 17 months. That's correct. I thought you meant the 17th of January. Okay. So, I mean, there's a time factor going on with this, and I'm not sure how we get, I think the best thing is get the whole city done, and then how do we finance that drop thing when you have to tie in to your house? And I don't know, it says $1,000, but some could be more, some could be less, it depends where you are, I think. So that's an issue. But if we get the whole city done in one shot, I think we have, it's easier, we could ask Dave on that. I think it's easier to finance, and then you don't have to go back and try to get other financings as you extend it. And if we just put in that one piece right now, the $20 million, we're just going to cover the main part of town and not get all the laterals that tie in everybody else. And I think it's, it looks cheaper to me. I mean, it looks less expensive, and you're going to get fiber. I mean, it's amazing. We'd be one of the few cities in the state with a totally wired fiber city. And I'm not sure how we go and get, I think Steve is now saying they got some information that's going to take another, we have to get a vote, we need a 51% vote. And how fast can we do that? Do we have to, is that going to take months to get that done and to get everybody on board to say, yes, let's do the whole city and what the cost is? So that's a new issue. So I'm for it, whatever we have to do to do it. This is the one, if we lose that opportunity, it will take, you'll never get it done unless there's some other government financing later on, a government grant.
Anyone else?
I'm for the internet wiring, however, I am absolutely against mandating it. It's not that big a price difference from what you're showing between the optional and the mandated. We've got people that barely pay their water bills with the rates that we've got, people that are basically retired but own their home. They're not going to qualify for special programs for financing if they've got a large chunk of equity that they can use. So I'd be very much in favor of the optional. I mean, I would benefit from it, but I know of other people that it's going to be a hardship, and even with just our existing bills, have trouble staying in the city because of the cost. So mandating another, you know, $1,000 roughly for the, and the monthly maintenance, their thing is that you've got a lot of people that don't, even though they use internet, they don't use home internet. They go and use the internet off of cellular devices, or they have internet through non-wired sources. So very in favor of the optional plan.
So I have the same position on it. I think it's a good option for our city. However, I do not like the idea of being forced to really do anything. I had some issue with how one of the sentences was worded in the presentation, I'll just go ahead and read it, on the page that said, "Do not pass go. Minimized financial risk. Acting now ensures financial stability, avoiding risks associated with voluntary participation, and ensures equitable cost distribution." The idea that a voluntary choice, my choice, would be taken from me is not something I'm very keen on. I know that during COVID, a lot of people did have to figure out how to get high-speed internet. There was children doing homeschool, people having to work from home. I have many clients who invested in internet options of their choice. I had a client whose daughter got married in Alaska. They purchased Starlink and traveled from Placerville to Alaska using Starlink and worked the entire time. And that was an investment choice that they made that worked good for their online work, work-from-home situation. So I think it's a good opportunity for the city. I think that I'm very pro voluntary participation. I think that's something that would be more reasonable, or perhaps, as the other gentleman mentioned, spending what we need to for the first 20 million on the main structure, and then giving people the choice to invest at choice later on. I think that that would be a good option. So, thank you. That concludes my thought.
I just echo the same concerns. Isn't this similar in many ways to the garbage service that we have that's mandated? And then we watched over the years, the costs keep going up and up. And when it comes to this cable system, what happens when it breaks? Who do you call to get it repaired? Now, it's going to be the person who breaks it who repairs it, but the city's going to have to be responsible for making sure that those repairs are done promptly, or you run into some substantial problems with people using the internet for 911 calls and things like that. So I just don't feel comfortable with the idea of mandating it. If it's really attractive, great, people will sign up. But sticking it to them, nah, it doesn't seem like a good idea.
My name's James. I know you guys said that the maintenance and repairs on the system was minimal. What happens when somebody digs a line up? Because I know one of my family members was a geologist, and when they surveyed the land and they said, the fiber optic is right here. If the digging company punctured that line or disrupted it, it was millions of dollars per second that line was down. So I don't know what we have in, like, to see about, you know, insurance on that? And how long is that going to be down for if it does happen? Because it might be a significant part of the city. So, concerns.
Not too much back and forth.
No, just one piece. I just want to clarify the one piece on that. So what we're talking about, if you don't, if you don't want to take this internet option and we wire the whole city, everyone would pay the $16 times whatever, 1612 it was? So under $200 a year to build out the city, and that's all you'd be charged. If you don't want to jump on there and use it, that's all you'd be, that would be it. So you're talking about $200 to tie that in.
Maybe, it's kind of a silly question, but what about the companies that offer internet now if they're aced out? Is that ever a problem? Can they sue the city for it?
Go back here. Okay. Sure, sure.
Thank you. The last thought was, we're trying to figure out how to fund this item, $17.3 million. Our last discussion was trying to figure out how to fund $43 million for a public safety building. And then I think the next agenda item is talking about how we're not even paying our staff. I think we're below, 30% below what other people are being paid in nearby areas, I think is what I had read in the report. So we're trying to figure out how to fund all these items, what's really the priority of public safety building, high-speed internet, or paying our staff livable wages. So I think we also need to look at what's our priority when it comes to funding and asking the public or in the city of Placerville to participate in that funding process. That's all.
Lots of great comments. A lot of those, a lot of what I've heard, though, is kind of what you put together when you actually go to the public and tell them what you're planning to do. For example, what happens when somebody digs up the line? For example, you know, how does this all kind of, how does tab A fit in a slot B? I mean, I don't want to get into answering too many of the specific questions right here and now, because quite honestly, that's part of a rollout plan. You know, you go, okay, we've heard great comments, we would address those if we can. My guess is this, and I get it, you know, I know lots of people in town that are on fixed incomes. I know we are an old community, and I know that there are folks that do, in fact, live day-to-day, or paycheck to paycheck, or social security check to social security check. So this is never, my comments are never about not understanding that reality. And for a lot of those people, what I'm about to say is, would be irrelevant, probably. Here's what I figure, if you start to wire up this town for real honest-to-God high-speed internet, a house that has it next to a house that doesn't is going to be more valuable. That's just going to be the reality of it. It would be like if you had a house with electricity and without electricity. That would be kind, it could very well be somewhat the same. So at some point, you're going to be in a situation where, yeah, you might not want to have, you might not want to have that thing out there forced on you or whatever. On the other hand, you're going to look at it and go, it makes a lot of sense for me to have this, even if I may never use it, because it's going to make my piece of property better than the one next door. But that'll be everybody's decision that they can make on their own. I don't know what kind of, we need to work. We need to get moving on this thing is what we need to do. So I guess the question is this, at least for me, are there any other questions about this? I'm going to throw out a couple, and maybe they'll be the ones you have. If we get moving on the 20 million bucks and putting in the spine, I'm just going to call it the backbone, the backbone, when do we need to make all these other decisions? I mean, we need to get moving on the basics. But what is, and if it's today, or not today, but if it's like real soon, that they'd really need to go out part and parcel, then obviously, we got a lot of work to do. But if I, you know, you might come back and say, because I want to get this thing going, we can't make that decision today, but we could do it at a meeting near us. To get it moving and then start to go to the public, and it's going to have to be pretty quick, and does spent meet obligated? So when we have an 18-month or 17-month, does that mean we're digging in the ground? Or, oh, okay, so I got head nodding, so we're going to have to have contracts done and liter, now, if we have somebody under contract, I don't want to get into too much into the inside baseball side of this thing, but if we have somebody under contract and they're ready to go, is that as the same, or do they literally have to start that, the second, the second part?
So in February, we, you recall last year, when we accepted the grant, we entered into an agreement with Entry Point. That's already in place. Entry Point is EntryPoint is our consultant.
Oh, right, right, right.
That is going to do this construct, this, they're, they're not a construction company, but they're going to oversee all this that happens. They have a construction company already on board. We will be bringing back to you probably in February, the work order.
Forgot that part.
To begin the work for, for this construction company.
Okay.
Our work order will be with EntryPoint. EntryPoint in turn has a work order with the construction.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to.
So, so that.
I made a decision.
There's a lot going on behind the scenes. We are working hard on this. We are working closely with engineering. We're getting a, a construction manager, we'll probably go out, do a third-party construction manager to help us make sure things are going right and reviewing the project and keep it going. They estimate to do that $20 million backbone infrastructure project, they think approximately six months to get that in the ground.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So they will start May-June-ish.
Okay.
Right, June-ish. And if everything goes as planned.
Okay.
It, it will be done in approximately six months. So approximately six to seven months ahead of the 18-month timeline.
And the backbone would serve 54%?
No, no, no.
No, no, that's, that's the funding part.
That, the backbone actually only serves 265 units.
And now it's just.
Out of about 5,000.
Okay, that's, and that's literally like Placerville Drive.
Yeah.
Main Street, Broadway.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, yeah.
Give or take.
Yeah.
Okay.
So essentially then, what we have to do in the very near future is to start, really starting to engage the community about all these other possibilities and then, and then pretty quickly come up with a plan of, of attack.
Let me, let me just jump in here.
Yeah.
A lot of discussion. We've, we've gone back and forth and.
No doubt.
Obviously, it would be great to be able to say, let's install it in the whole city, 100% and have, give everybody, it would give a lot of opportunity to other people that otherwise probably wouldn't take it. But we recognize the difficulty of doing that. And as mentioned, depending on which scenario we go with, there's different laws that we can do that, may require either a 51% or a two-thirds vote. I don't think we have.
No.
The time nor the wherewith to, to get that done and do a campaign and really take advantage of when they're in there. So I, I agree with the rest of you that are here. I, I would like, I would like to see the entire city, but I think the voluntary plan is, is the best option that we can go.
And then you, and then you, but it's still, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, yeah, I mean, I think the voluntary option is kind of with the schedule and the means, and I think you sell to people, like.
That's it, exactly, that's what I was going to say.
Internet in your own house, you're ideologically opposed to it, it's going to increase your property value.
Yeah.
So you still want to sign up for this.
You don't want to be the house on your street that doesn't have it.
So, so we have two internet service providers that we have selected. We did an RFP for that. And we had three or four that submitted, but we selected the top two.
Yeah.
And they gave us our, their pricing just to, and all they're doing is offering the service over all of our infrastructure. So one of them, I was very surprised, one of the low cost was $5.95 a month.
Yeah, that's assuming a certain count.
Yeah, so that may change once we get into actual negotiation. But part of their contract we enter in with, into with them is going to be the marketing and going out and getting those people to sign up for the service. We're working on things related to that. We're trying to finalize the numbers. All of those pieces are slowly coming together so that we can do what we need to and keep this moving.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Yeah, I just had a question about, I guess, the drop fee or the, the connection cost. So it's, it's not going to be a fixed cost, it's going to be dependent upon the property, obviously, because, I mean, my house is a long, long way from the nearest utility pole. It's not going to be $950 to connect my house.
Well, remember, it's not utility pole, this is all underground.
So they're going to dig on personal property to put.
Yeah, they'll need to get your permission, but yeah, but you're, you're right, it may be a longer run down a driveway, et cetera, depending on. So we've done, this 950 is an average cost. It probably will not be a set cost, right, Steve, if we figured that out?
Correct.
But, but, so that, that's an average. If, if you have a, you know, 1,000-foot driveway, you need to think about that and, oh, you're probably going to get charged a little bit more for your drop cost.
A lot more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and for folks that have the benefit of having underground utilities, now, the, the power lines come up country club, but when you turn onto Sean, everything's underground, you would actually probably be, because they're just presumably pulling wires through whatever, whatever, God knows whatever conduit they threw in the ground in 1980, but, you know, and like up to my house, there's already a thing that comes in because I've got all underground utilities already. So probably getting into there would be cheaper because you've already got a line, you're just pulling a wire through an existing conduit. So there's a lot of, we could go through a bajillion scenarios right now. But the idea is that we're going to move ahead. We need to have a very long, well, not long, we need to have a very heartfelt and fact-based discussion with our community and let them know what the opportunities are and how this can benefit them, or not, I mean.
We, we didn't show it to you tonight, but there's already, we already have a lot of things prepared through our consultant.
Yeah.
The new website, promotion materials for both social media and door hangers, et cetera, that we will work on, on getting out. Once we, there's some, we need to solidify, like, the numbers before we can do that.
And, and we need to talk to more folks like the folks over my left shoulder here who have those concerns and reservations and, and feelings and, and have answers. Because if you don't have good answers for people, then you'll never convince them to do anything.
And, and this is, this is not, we're, we're not the first to do this. We'll be one of the first in California, I will admit, but it's been done in other cities. And the consultant we have, are using has that experience and has done that. When you talk about that cost of, of hitting a fiber line, I've heard that story too. And most of the time, though, that is a middle mile line rather than last mile line, which is what, we won't be dealing with the middle mile line, we will contract that with somebody else. The last mile line is much smaller, our lines, and so you're not talking about the, the huge cost that you see the, when you hit a, a major line for, for that. So there, there are differences and, and yes, we have, you know, got all that figured in. We will have, the way, the pro, that will be set up, we will have more than one source for the, the fiber coming in. So if one goes down on one end, you should still be able to get it for the most part. There may be small areas that will get cut off, but you'll have that double protection that you'll, will stay up. So all of that's been worked through and thought through in the, in the process. And you saw on there the $25 a month for maintenance and operations, that is to pay for that problem when something goes down. The, the good thing about fiber that we have learned in this process is fiber is much, much less likely to go down. And now, obviously, somebody cuts the line, it's going to go down. But normally, if you have a problem with fiber, it's something to do with internal router in your home and stuff like that. And many times, from what we've been told from the internet service providers that are doing this now, it's because maybe you need to reboot your router or just turn it off and on. So most of the repairs that they say they do nowadays, they do remotely, they'd never even have to send anybody out to, to do them.
And I, I would just throw my support behind the voluntary option also, I would, yeah, just to add that to the conversation. And it's, it is important to recognize that, that fiber is going to be a dinosaur also at some point. This is not, you know, this 30-year timeframe, we're in, you know, in an era where technology is moving tremendously fast and this, this technology is going to be a dinosaur at some point in the near future also. So just keep that in mind.
Just be brainwave, brainwaves, we'll just fight. Anyway, no, you're right. Just like all that other stuff we saw. Okay, anything else? Have you, you've got enough? Okay, great. One last item. I, also, I'd like to, you know, I, I think it's, no one is, at least I'm not, I can't speak for the other four people on the council. No one, it's certainly on me, it has not lost the, if you start adding up all the numbers in this agenda, that they are significant. But I would offer this, we live in a town where people took chances all the time, from the very beginning of it, the decision to start mining gold, to then switch over to ranching and farming, to becoming a service community. I'm sure that they had a big discussion about bringing electricity into this town because of the cost and what it would mean. And folks had lived in the town forever without it. And they said, well, why do I need it? I don't need that, that's crazy. I, I would also just say, we can take chances if they are well-considered and are based in good, solid foundational information. And we won't do anything, I at least, I will try not to do anything crazy. And then if I do, four people will stop me. So, anyway, let's, but, but for, at least for right now, because we're not actually spending any money, let's reach for the stars, as it were. Review and discuss options to increase funding for general fund operations. Yeah.
I'll be quick with this one, it's somewhat already come up.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make the point with this one, and I have, I guess I should apologize for bringing all these financial items here, but they are related to our.
They are related.
Plan. And it, it is an issue that is becoming more and more apparent. You know, recall at your last meeting, you approved an increase to the Development Services Director's salary due to the fact that we were unable to recruit that the salary did. We hope that we will be able to now with this new salary. So it, it's an issue that is out there. Again, I won't run through what our options are because we've talked about them under the last two items and, and you know what those are. But I do think it's something that we need to take a serious look at. And, and it's not just us. If you recall on this last election, the city of Folsom, who, when you look at everything, look at all these houses they're building and all the retail development, they're, they're just rolling in money, right? But they, they have a serious budget deficit. And if they do, they were counting on a 1% sales tax increase going through and it failed. And so I, I think you're going to see more and more of this. Something has to change, something has to go differently. And, and I will, I will, just wanted to point this out, one of my biggest frustrations as a city manager is all of the things that come down from the state that we have to do. We were talking, I've talked with my development services staff today who oversees garbage, of all things, and the extensive reports and, and monitoring that we have to do for garbage. And I, I shouldn't downplay that because I know, I'm in favor of recycling, there's good things with that, but the, I'll give you one example. They recently deemed us not seriously, they said, you guys are out of compliance. Well, we're doing everything they want us to do, we just haven't updated our agreement between us and our garbage company to, to say we're going to do those things. We're doing them, so it's getting done, but they're saying, you're out of compliance, you're in trouble if you don't get this done. And I'm thinking, we've, we've done everything you've asked us to do and yet we have to spend this time to go through and update our, update our, our agreement, which fortunately we were looking at doing anyway, but there's so many things like that, I could probably go around to every department, they, they would tell you the reports and the things that we have to do to the state in order to keep going. And the, so much time is spent on that that could be spent on other things that are, I'll get down to, that are quality of life things that we would like to be working on. We've talked about, there's talking here about our parks and trails and that was talked about tonight and the need to do something there. We spend so much time, our community services director talking about new playgrounds. Well, the laws require us to do X, Y, and Z and we can't just do a new playground. We, we, we've got a slide that broke, that's broken. The company that built that has gone out of business. We can't, we could get a slide from another company, but the regulations don't allow us to do that. And we have been, be in violation and so we can't, so we have to buy a whole new playground instead of just slide. Those are the things that we're facing and those are the things that are driving up our costs along with the normal inflation that every one of us are facing in terms of, you know, prices for food and gas and et cetera and living. And so that's really all I wanted to point out on this, but we are currently in negotiations with our union who is, who rejected the first contract and we'll go back again with them. And we are coming up with negotiations for our Police Officer Association this, this spring also. So anyway, just wanted to point out those things. Again, I don't expect anybody to say, I have the answer. I wish they did. But it's something that we're going to have to take on and, and be serious about. Just point out again, we did, we froze five positions, as you recall, in our last budget. And I think every one of those department heads have come to me at one time or another and said, I really need that position to keep up.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'll, I'll end there.
Just to give you some, I guess, I don't know, solace is not the right word, but my favorite county that isn't El Dorado, Lassen County up in Susanville, and I guarantee you they are way more conservative than you folks ever dreamed of being down here, passed a half-cent sales tax, the city did, for general operations. And I was absolutely flabbergasted when they did. I thought, oh my gosh, this is never going to pass. And it actually won by, they had, they only needed 50-plus-one and it actually passed by a healthy margin up there. So I'm not suggesting to raise taxes, don't get me wrong, but it can be, you know, there are folks, when they see the red ink and they see the services dwindling, you can sometimes get folks to, to, to tax themselves. And, and up there, there's nobody coming in from outside paying their sales tax. They, they are, you know, because no one lives outside Susanville, barely. So anyway, just a, just a little piece of information there. Do you have any questions, comments? I mean, we all know where we live in this universe. Okay, back here?
One comment regarding broadband. That is going to be a big economic driver to this town. You want to get more sales taxes, bring more businesses, more people into town. You have broadband, we're the gateway to the Sierras. People want to live here and the first thing they ask is what kind of internet access you have.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I mean, any, you ask anybody, they'll ask you that. What kind of internet access do you have? Everywhere. So once you bring that in, so I think, and I think it's important to note, that's 60, that's 60% tax rate?
Right, you, I know, you're an ad, you're a, you're, yeah. Anybody over here? Finally. I was starting to get worried about you, sis.
You thought I was never going to say anything, huh? We do have to pay our people. They are, I think, one of the city's really biggest resources are the people that we have who work for this city. And without them, it's just like, we don't have fire hydrants? You don't have a city? Well, if you don't have people, you don't have a city either. We have good people and if we want them to stay, then we have to pay them so they can afford to live here. The thing that I've heard from people who would like to live here is, are there any reasonably priced houses? Not whether it's a bad bed or not, but is there any place to live? So that's another problem. But I do think we do need to pay our people. And I think that that is, along with Measure H and Measure L, to fix our infrastructure, we need, maybe we do need to pass a quarter or a half-cent sales tax to pay our people.
Anyway, I just want to thank everybody. Thank you all for bringing all this great information to us. Thanks to my folks up here. Lots of good questions, lots of good discussions. Thanks to all of you. Very good comments and questions and concerns and Boosterism and, and Kirk and everything. So, we have to have lunch one day. Okay, and so I think that's it. Do we want to stand adjourned? We stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Drive home.